Well, we'll call the September 1st, 2020--
Supervisor.
--a meeting to order.
Supervisor, I don't-- Chair, I don't think your microphone's on.
If we could have a roll call?
Good morning Supervisor Leopold.
Here.
Friend?
Here.
Coonerty?
Here.
Big Ferguson?
Here.
And Chair Caput?
Here. And if we could have a moment of silence, a moment of prayer, and then followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual-- It is in justice for all. We have considerations of late additions to the agenda, additions and deletions to the consent and regular agenda.
Good morning Chair Caput and members of the board. We do have a number of revisions. On item nine, we have a correction. The formal title should read "Public Hearing to Consider Application 18161: A Proposal for Permanent Room Housing at 165th East Street in Seacliff, Requiring Rezoning Local Coastal Plan Amendment and Residential Development Permit (with Parking Exception) to Determine That The Proposal Is Exempt From Further Environmental Review Under the California Environmental Quality Act and Take Related Actions As Outlined In the Memorandum of the Planning Director." We also have additional materials for item number 10. We have a revised memo, packet pages 177 through 181. There are clean and strikeout underlined copies, and there's a revised attachment, be packet pages 185 to 190, also clean and strikeout underlined copies. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. If we have-- Do we have any announcements by board members of items to be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Chair, if we could just pull item 18 and put it at the end of the agenda, I'd appreciate it. 18.
That'll become-- You're gonna actually pull it more than a comment?
Yes.
So, item number 18 on the consent will now be item number 13.1 on the regular agenda?
Which number?
It will be 13.1 on the regular agenda.
And then if we-- Well, we-- Oral Communications, public comment. We do have this here time--
Yes.
Supervisor Leopold has a proclamation?
Yeah. Someone has their phone going in here, which it makes it a little bit more interesting. Well, good morning Chair and good morning members of the board and the public. Today, I'd just like to share a proclamation honoring National Recovery Month and Overdose Awareness Month. And I have a short reading of the proclamation, and then we have a number of speakers and a special guest. This is obviously very important, and as we deal with the twin disasters that we have faced this year, we don't forget the important impact that our work to reduce substance use disorder in our community and the work that we need to do around overdose awareness to make sure that overdoses don't claim lives here in Santa Cruz County. So, as I read here, "Whereas National Recovery Month and Overdose Awareness Day demonstrates to our community a commitment to improving access to treatment programs for mental and/or substance use disorders, and whereas recovery from mental and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas treatment and recovery services for mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective and people can and do recover in Santa Cruz County and around the nation, and whereas addressing and overcoming mental substance use and co-occurring disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and encourage those in need of help to seek appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas according to the California Department of Public Health, there are 23 opioid-related deaths in Santa Cruz County and 2,428 in the state of California in 2019, and whereas Santa Cruz County Syringe Services Program exchange participants have reported 87 overdose reversals using dispensed Narcan thus far this year for the period from January 2020 to the end of July 2020, and whereas to help more people with lived experience achieve and sustain recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the County of Santa Cruz Health Services Agency invite all county residents to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, John Leopold, Santa Cruz County First District Supervisor, representing our entire board, hereby encourage the entire Santa Cruz County community to observe this month as National Recovery Month and to promote the societal benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery for mental and substance use disorders, to celebrate people in recovery, to laud the contributions of our community service providers in helping people to actually recover. I know we have a couple of speakers. We have a special speaker that I want to call on first, which is on video here.
So, we're not sure if the video is working. She is on the phone.
Okay. We know-- She's not a Santa Cruz resident, but she's been a part of the Santa Cruz County community for a while. And I'd like to introduce Melissa Etheridge.
Hello. I'm so sorry I can't be with you video, but it seems that Mac and Microsoft don't get along very well. So, I wish I could see you. I'm so honored, and although my wife and I are not living in Santa Cruz at the moment, it is definitely our intention in the next few years to get up there and become a more permanent part of this beautiful community that you have up here. I am-- I just love Santa Cruz so much. I've been working with my business partners in Etheridge Organics, Josie and Cricket Roberto, and I've just learned so much about Santa Cruz, so much about what the heart of Santa Cruz is, which is loving its beautiful space that you have up there, and also the beautiful people and helping them, and being a part of this, you know, addiction awareness is so important, and so much can be learned, and so much can come from what you're doing there and what we're going to do there in Santa Cruz. We want to help people. We want to be a light and start a movement there in Santa Cruz where we can provide answers beyond pharmaceuticals, where we can provide help, where we can lift people up in the emotional ways and the physical ways that are needed to overcome this psychological and physical issue. I'm so grateful for all of you. You do such great work. I'm looking forward to joining you all soon, and I'm just sending you love and much strength. And I hope all who were affected by the fires are beginning to rebuild and rebuilding a strong, gorgeous Santa Cruz. And thank you so much, John.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
And now we have some other speakers as well. I think Dr. Newell is here.
Good morning. Thank you for this very important recognition of National Recovery Month and Overdose Awareness Day. According to the California Department of Public Health, there have been 23 opioid-related deaths in the County of Santa Cruz last year and more this year and counting. As I'm sure you're aware, our county is not alone in the struggle to adequately address this issue. In 2015, the DEA Drug Enforcement Agency stated that drug overdose deaths from opioids had become an epidemic. In 2016, the Center for Disease Control's director called for urgent action, saying, "America is awash in opiates." In 2017, the Food and Drug Administration called opioid addiction its biggest crisis. That same year, at the urging of the U.S. Surgeon General and a specially-appointed commission, the President declared our country's opioid crisis a national emergency. Every day, more than 130 people in the United States die after overdosing on opioids. The misuse of and addiction to opioids, including prescription pain relievers, heroin, and synthetic opioids such as fentanyl, is a serious national crisis that affects public health as well as social and economic welfare. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that the total economic burden of prescription opioid misuse alone in the United States is $80 billion a year, including the cost of healthcare, lost productivity, addiction treatment, and criminal justice involvement. How did this happen? In the late 1990s, pharmaceutical companies reassured the medical community that patients would not become addicted to prescription opioid pain relievers, and healthcare providers began to prescribe them at greater rates. This subsequently led to widespread diversion and misuse of these medications before it became clear that these medications could indeed be highly addictive. Opioid overdose rates began to increase. In 2017, more than 47,000 Americans died as a result of opioid overdose, including prescription opioids, heroin, and illicitly manufactured fentanyl, a powerful synthetic opioid. That same year, an estimated 1.7 million people in the United States suffered from substance use disorders related to prescription opioid pain relievers, and 652,000 suffered from a heroin use disorder. Opioid misuse and overdose are seen across the population, crossing all socioeconomic strata, to include the young and old, rich and poor, male and female, all races and ethnicities. The consequences are heartbreaking and very personal. And now I'm going to put aside my health officer hat for one minute and speak as a mother. Four years ago, I lost my oldest child to an opioid overdose here in Santa Cruz. He was 38, a beloved dentist at Dientis here in Santa Cruz, a brilliant musician and an artist. He was living at home with us, in our two-physician household, and none of us knew he was using. His younger brother found him unresponsive, attempted CPR, and watched as paramedics tried in vain to resuscitate him. His death has rocked our world, our families, and a great circle of friends and loved ones beyond that. From the belongings and journals he left behind, we have been able to piece together his path to self-destruction. It started, it turns out, 20 years earlier as a student at UC Santa Cruz, where he dabbled in heroin briefly before completing a methadone treatment program at the Student Health Center. Almost two decades later, after graduating from dental school, he began to write narcotics prescriptions for himself, presumably for recreational use. Then he wrote them in his patients' names and filling them for his own use. As safe prescribing practices came into law, making this more difficult, he turned to mail-order narcotics from the U.S. and Canada. The DEA cracked down on those, so he ordered from Mexico, India, and China. When this also became impossible, he turned to the streets to heroin. He went to the same dealer he went to 20 years ago at the boardwalk. His autopsy report lists his cause of death as an accidental overdose of opioids and fentanyl. The circumstances of my son's tragic death unfortunately play out over and over again in this country, including with Melissa Etheridge's son just a few months ago. Once every 10 minutes, this happens. Since the late 1990s, opioid use has skyrocketed across America. Deaths due to opioid overdoses have quadrupled since 1999, and the COVID pandemic has not made this better. In fact, much worse. Drug overdose deaths are now the leading cause of injury death in the U.S., higher even than motor vehicle accidents, and the leading cause of death overall in people under the age of 50. And opioid deaths are just the tip of the iceberg. For every death, uncounted numbers in our community are impacted by the misery of addiction. Beyond families, the opioid epidemic affects entire communities and presents a grim challenge to healthcare providers, law enforcement, and society as a whole. Not only is our country number one in prescription opioid use per capita, but we use 80% of the global supply of illegal opiates. In California, the opioid epidemic continues to evolve and impose a serious threat to the health of all individuals throughout the state. In order to effectively address the opioid epidemic, it is important to recognize that opioid abuse and overdose is closely tied to other trends in the state. As California has seen rising rates of social inequities, homelessness, mental illness, and despair, the state also has seen an increase in opioid abuse, addiction, and overdose deaths from many causes, especially among those most marginalized in our society. So, what can we do? Recognition such as this today is a first step. Opioid misuse affects families and communities. It's a challenge to healthcare providers, law enforcement, and society as a whole. It's a multifaceted problem that calls for strong partnerships to combat it. We need to approach it as we would any other epidemic: prevention, containment, and treatment. Treating it simply as a moral or criminal issue will not work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story.
Thank you very much.
I think there's one or two more speakers.
Hi. Good morning, Board. Thank you very much. Yesterday, the SafeRx and Harm Reduction Coalition and Community Prevention Partners held a Zoom event to honor International Overdose Awareness Day, and Melissa and Gail spoke, and so many other parents and people affected. The one good thing about COVID is we can meet online. We had parents from Texas and Los Angeles and Monterey County, and it was really a beautiful event. It'll be released on video, and I will be sure to send it your way. But I wanted to offer this small token of our appreciation for Dr. Newell. And this is a collage that many of your leaders in your community participated in, Matt Nathan Vincent and Kristen O'Connor from Santa Cruz Community Health Center, Dr. Newell, Beverly and Stony Brook, and of course, the fantastic and amazing Jen Hastings. And as it reads, it says, "As the pandemic continues, overdose deaths are surging nationwide. We are losing too many lives to conditions that are preventable. We can end overdose. Enhancing empathy, we commit to ending overdose." I greatly appreciate Dr. Newell's bravery and everyone else's collaborative effort on this matter, and we really strive for empathy for the families that are affected and the people that are living with substance use disorder. And Santa Cruz County is one that values connection with marginalized populations, and we know that opioid overdoses is affecting the lifespan of a generation of Americans. I can't even comprehend that, and it's beyond intellectually disturbing. And as we move forward, we know that we can do better. We can do more to connect with people that are isolating. COVID is not a friend of substance use disorder. It is not easy to shelter in place. People that are affected by substance use disorder have the same despair and loneliness and ability to self-medicate that we all have. However, they're using alone, which is very unsafe, and we are very nervous about the effects next year that we'll be looking at. So, I just implore the board to continue all your fantastic work with supporting programs that Dr. Newell and Mimi Hall are very competent, and Mimi has talked to you about how Plumas County addressed overdose to nearly none or none. You have a fantastic leadership on this issue, and they can definitely lead the way. The good news is that last week, even our Little Harm Reduction Coalition, we accepted reports of three successful opioid overdose reversals. The great unknown is our contaminated drug supply. There's people that are using that aren't aware of the fentanyl that is contained in this. We saw it starting to happen on the East Coast, and it has moved here. So, I just really thank all the brave people in the community that come forward from all walks of life to talk about this important issue. Thank you. And here's our gift for you, Gail. You can take the bag, because I don't know about the COVID-touching thing. So, thank you so much, Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your work to help save lives.
I'll be very brief. Thank you so much, and thank you, Gail, for your courage. I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors will recognize the evidence that we have currently to address opioid addiction. It's not easy, and recovery itself is a process. But I really encourage the Board of Supervisors to work collaboratively with the county, to listen to the county's recommendations, listen to your physicians in the community. Please don't be swayed by fear, by stigma, by shame. Please step up and do the right thing. Work collaboratively with all the physicians in your community and the Harm Reduction Coalition that is also evidence-based and has support from the California Department of Public Health. We need to work together. I kind of feel like I'm on bended knee around this. That the Board of Supervisors, please pivot away from fear and stigma. Thank you.
I think we have a final speaker and--
Hi. My name is Josie Roberto, and I just really want to say thank you to the board for taking a stand and doing this proclamation. It's very near and dear to my family and our heart, and it's something that I've shied away from, and because of the stigma. Our oldest daughter suffers from substance use disorder, and it's something I never thought I'd say publicly. She's an amazing, beautiful woman. She developed it in her twenties. She's had a really challenging time this last six years, and she's OD'd several times. She's been in the hospital for infections related to contaminated drugs, and yet she still stands. And she stands today because of the programs and services here in this county, because of the beautiful people that reach out, and, you know, and because of Narcan, I have to say that. It's really challenging, even for me, the stigma that I found I had in my own heart of zero tolerance. You're either clean or you're dirty. I mean, just saying those words, "clean and dirty" alone, have a lot of connotations. And what are we saying to these beautiful people? This is my baby, and she's an amazing, kind, generous, intelligent human. I'm sure a lot of these other people that don't have a voice, that suffer from substance use disorder, have. And so, they are a part of our community, and it is up to us, the ones that can help, to help and to bring a voice and to try to dissipate the words and the stigma and the shame that goes along with it, and just release all that, and just come back to the love and the compassion, and not stress about the why or they're bad, they're good, just really coming together as a community to try and prevent overdoses that don't need to happen and prevent people from losing their loved ones. Really, I believe that Santa Cruz County has been the leader in so many ways, and I have confidence that all the beautiful people in this government, in the Health and Human Services that I have met, are amazing. And I know we can be the leader in this throughout the nation. So, thank you so much for taking a stand. It really means a lot to us, and from my family to all of you, thank you.
Thank you. You know, the testimony clearly shows that substance use disorder affects so many people in our community, and I just want to give my thanks to our frontline medical providers and law enforcement personnel who help do the work on the frontlines, working to prevent overdoses, to our volunteers who are out in the community, providing the tools necessary to prevent overdoses, to provide information, to give good harm reduction information, and to help be that contact and bring people into services, and to the families who are affected by substance use disorder, you-- what you have to go through in order to support your loved one, and to face the ultimate tragedy, to lose someone close to you, our heart goes out to you. And we have tried here at our Board of Supervisors to provide resources to ensure that we have money for substance use disorder programs, to provide medicated assisted treatment in our jails, and we'll continue to look for ways to expand that work to make sure that people don't die from drug overdoses here in Santa Cruz County. We're going to close with a song from Melissa, whose family has been touched. I think you're there still, Melissa.
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. So very moved by all of you and your desire to move forward in this issue and make it not so much stigma. And it's one of the reasons why I wrote this song, when I realized my son was struggling and might lose that struggle. It's called "Here Comes the Pain." The bones get broken, and the skin gets torn, and the scars they bleed like the day they were born. When the mouth gets wise to the heart's disguise, here comes the pain. Here comes the pain. Well, the dreams get lost in the clouds of sorrow, and the hopelessness is hard to swallow. Beyond repair, what the soul can bear, here comes the pain. Here comes the pain. And it feels like kissing Jesus as it melts into your veins. When the whole damn world is busted, there's no need in being sane. Beyond repair, what the soul can bear, the nerves they tear, dying a death of despair. Oh, here comes the pain. Here comes the pain. So, hold on-- So hold on, I'm coming. Hold on, I'm coming. It's gonna heal for me. It's gonna heal for me. I'm coming. Thank you so much, everyone.
Mr. Chair.
I think Supervisor McPherson wanted to say something.
Yeah, just very briefly, I want to thank Supervisor Leopold for bringing this up for National Recovery Month and those brave speakers. This is a huge human tragedy, and we're just want to say to everybody, I hope we can reach those that need help. And we're not here to blame, we're here to help. And that message is strong, and we'll do whatever we can to get us out of this. It's a huge issue in our community and throughout the nation. We're just here to help you.
I want to thank all the speakers who came here today to share your story, for your amazing work that you do. It's great to have our new Substance Use Disorder Commission member, Josie Roberto, as part of today's presentation. And special thanks to Melissa Etheridge coming in over the ether to share her song and her beauty with us. Thank you, Melissa. And while that, I'll turn it back over to the chair for oral communications.
There's somebody to give that to?
Yes, I'll give it to them.
Announcements by any board members, removing anything from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? I know we have item 13.1. Any comments on the consent agenda?
Well, Chair, I think we want to make sure we open it up for other people to speak during oral communications.
All right, public comment. Any person may address the board during the public comment period. Speakers must not exceed three minutes. How many people do we have to speak? Okay, we'll go a half an hour with three minutes each, then we'll go to two minutes. Anybody that has more to say, you can maybe let them come up to the beginning of the line. You can only speak once, but now is the time to... It could be an item listed on today's consent agenda, closed session, and yet to be heard by the regular agenda. For people that can't wait, you can speak on an item that's on the agenda later. And there you go. Thank you.
Good morning, public and officers behind this wall. My name is James Ewing Whitman. First, I have a question. What went on just before me was very beautiful and very passionate and with a lot of feeling, but was it really actually on the agenda? I'm not sure if it was. So I was doing some research this morning, and it kind of has to do with what was just being discussed. And maybe if this is a micro, maybe this is a macro of possibly what's going on. So I took seven pages of notes. I think I'll read these two pages. There's nothing positive about ignoring our fellow sentient beings. International classifications of diseases, which is ICD. ICD-10 began in 1983. It's taken from ICD-9, which was started in 1869, and was known as the London Bill of Mortality. ICD-10 stays as laws until January 1st of 2022. What it is, is over 14,000 classifications on how two doctors can diagnose an individual and euthanize them, execute them. The military uses this quite extensively. I'm not going to use up my whole three minutes out of respect for everybody else. This information is from Celeste Salam. She was a Department of Homeland Security worker for over 20 years and is very outspoken about what's going on with the processes. You know, there are links to how the U.S. military, and this is why 3735, would get paid for injecting you with a vaccine that would kill you. Now, I could go on for quite some time, but I'm going to respect other areas where I want to talk. But I am very curious why this subject was brought up this morning and was not on this agenda that I picked up yesterday. So thank you very much for your time.
Very welcome.
Good morning. So good to see everyone. I want to thank all the people who spoke before and Supervisor Leopold, thank you for giving the time to such an important issue. And Melissa's song was so relevant to... The words were so relevant to what I want to talk with you about today. It kind of got me a little emotional. So can you... Oh, here? Okay. So today is September 1st, and in 1999, those of you that remember when that parking lot where Lillian's restaurant is, was the Harley-Davidson parking lot, remember that? We started a petition back then. A group of parents whose children had cancer and who had lost their children to cancer, we decided to petition that then-Governor Gray Davis to declare September Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the state of California. And back then, I remember the statistic that one in every 365 children would be diagnosed with cancer. And I remember thinking that we'll get better. We may not need to worry about this in 10, 15, 20 years. But that number is now one in every 285 children will be diagnosed with cancer. And this year, just since COVID struck, Jacob's Heart has lost five children during the pandemic. And if you can imagine being so isolated, so afraid already to go out to the grocery store when you're caring for a child with cancer who is immunosuppressed, what that would be like when all of a sudden the world shuts down and it's even scary for you to go to the doctor to take care of your child. This has been a day-to-day struggle like no other at Jacob's Heart in the past 20 years. But the thing is, what we've seen more than anything during these last few months is the compassion of this community. All of you would be so proud to live here if you were to spend a day at Jacob's Heart, seeing people show up with hand sanitizer, with diapers, with food. We're delivering groceries to the doorsteps every week so families don't have to go to the grocery store. And that's only because this community cares so much and knows the work we do. So I just want to say that this year has just brought so much turmoil and so much pain to these families that we're supporting. But never before in our history have I witnessed such an unprecedented expression of love and compassion. So this day, thank you for the proclamation. 22 years of proclamation... Oh, can I go ahead? I would just like to read just part of it. And I'll come to Jacob's Heart and see the proclamation, the original proclamation that Supervisor McPherson, I'll never stop thanking you for walking that in 20 years ago to Governor Davis and having that happen. I know he's not here, but he can hear me. So it was him that did that for us. So there's a lot of whereas, but I'm just going to focus on this one, our commitment. Whereas during the COVID-19 crisis, Jacob's Heart has been keeping medically fragile children and their families housed, fed, emotionally supported, by steadfastly adhering to the following commitments. Parents of children with cancer and other serious illnesses will be relieved from financial fears and will be able to focus attention on their children. No child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity during and after the pandemic. And no seriously ill child in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of lack of transportation. That is what we're committed to, and that's what this community is supporting. And this year especially, this proclamation of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in September means the most. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. I'm sure they'll get them.
Thank you. Hi. We'll help you.
Allow me.
Thank you. Okay. Good morning, supervisors, colleagues, public supporters. I'm John Doherty. I serve as Accessible Services Coordinator at the Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District. I'm here this morning to ask supervisors for whatever help, whatever assistance they can provide. I have... Santa Cruz, the main transit hub for Metro is the Pacific Station down here on 920 Pacific Avenue. For more than 30 years, the Pacific Station has included the Accessible Services Office. And for over 20 years, that has been the office where I start work. As Accessible Services Coordinator, I help people in groups and one-on-one to use the bus service. And Pacific Station is a great place to introduce people to the bus. All buses, with the exception of our Watsonville local route, such as the 75 Green Valley, all of our buses, including the Highway 17 Express, either stop at Pacific Station or start there. I'm here this morning because I am being moved without consultation from Pacific Station to a remote location in SoCal at Research Park Drive, which for several more months will house our Paratransit Administration offices. This change will mean, for example, that rather than being a person and a service, since as Accessible Services Coordinator, I'm a Department of One, rather than being accessible, meetable at Pacific Station, I will be at a location in SoCal that is served by one bus every 30 minutes in both directions. And for anyone who travels towards Santa Cruz, it is unsafe to try to get to the bus stops. It's physically inaccessible. So besides cut in service and talking about this move, which is moving forward today and could be concluded by tomorrow, I am also concerned because I've alerted my supervisor and managers to the fact that I live with medical conditions, which leave me vulnerable to COVID and vulnerable in new environments around strangers. My doctor has written a note advising that because of my medical conditions, it would be better for me to remain at my current work site. That is being ignored. I'm here today to talk about cuts to service to the public, but also about my own safety. I don't understand why I should be at risk, why the office has to be moved when other means can be done, other ways can be done to basically do what I've been told needs to be done. I'm here because I'm at risk. I'm asking your help because I'm not sure what else to do. There's a provision in the contract where I could refuse to work due to unsafe conditions, but that is likely to get me fired. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My name is Dave Willis. I didn't come here for this, but it's here, so here I am. First, I want to say thanks to that doctor over there because of her work, decisions, and protecting us all. She's smart, brave, and the delivery of what her work represents, right on. Thanks a whole lot. I appreciate it. I can't speak. I can't... Second, the thing is, we was talking about this opiate. I got 21 years clean. If you want to look at it, look at me. What do you see? If it were not for NAA, those programs, I'd probably still be in the mix. I got out. I'm out. In fighting this drugs, you got to really want it. You got to want it like you want air. And this is for life. It's forever. Ain't no joke. It's very serious. So for the families, I've learned of a place called Al-Anon. Families go there and learn what you're dealing with. Learn how to deal with it. Al-Anon, great place. I went there. I learned, and that's when I was in the mix. I just wanted to know what the meeting was. So I'm telling you right now, it's a starting place. I came here today because I wanted to commend and salute the firefighters, first responders, and the community dealing with these fires and stuff. That's what I mean. That's what it's about. I want to help. I don't know how or what to do. I don't want to get in their way. So I think I stay out the way, but I want to help. So in the interim, I just want to commend firefighters and the people that I mentioned, the community, they was helping in various ways during this fire crisis. So I just want to commend and salute them all. They're heroes. Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Deborah Lane, and I am a resident of the city of Santa Cruz. Little did I think that I would be spending this day, my 68th birthday, pleading for the love of my life, John Doherty's health, well-being, well-being and life. Little did I expect in the 30th year of the Americans with Disabilities Act, I'd be pleading to you to intervene and stop the move of his office over to Research Park. There is a dangerous crossing there. It is inexplicable. It is not... It is inexplicable to move his office away from the hub, to put him at high risk of COVID-19. It is no longer a matter of personnel behavior. It is a matter of life. It is a matter of access, and it is a matter of decency. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman Cabot, members of the board, and members of the resilient, strong, and compassionate community of the county of Santa Cruz. Good morning. My name is Kathleen Conley. I am the Emergency Preparedness Manager with the Public Health Division of the Health Service Agency of the county.
And I'm Brenda Brenner. I'm the EMS Director and currently acting as the Medical Health Operational Area Coordinator for the fire event. for the fire event and COVID.
Thank you.
I would also like to acknowledge all of the county employees who are working so hard in our dual disaster response and our great leader, Health Officer Dr. Gail Newell. We're here this morning to thank you for your support for National Preparedness Month and the proclamation that the board has put forth, declaring September 2020 as National Preparedness Month in Santa Cruz County. I'd like to share a couple of the bullets from the proclamation. Whereas recent events locally, regionally, and nationally, including the unprecedented global COVID-19 pandemic and the CZU lightning complex wildfires, flooding, earthquakes, and other natural disasters have impacted the health and safety of community members. And whereas our medically fragile and electricity-dependent individuals may experience greater risks in times of emergencies or disasters, and the potential for future widespread planned safety power shut-offs will directly impact residents, visitors, and businesses. And whereas it is each person's responsibility to be as prepared as possible for emergencies and build community resilience, and where it is proactive to take steps such as face covering, practicing social distancing, frequent hand washing, signing up for local alerts, checking insurance coverages, documenting valuables, creating an emergency plan for communication and evacuation. There are a few more action steps that are listed that are pertinent to all of us at this time. What I would like to also encourage our community members is to think of preparedness as action as well as a mindset and a way of life. We thank you for your support. And the conclusion is, whereas during National Preparedness Month, we emphasize the importance of readying ourselves and our communities to be resilient and build collective impact in the face of any emergency we may encounter by promoting the national campaign of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, disasters don't wait. Make your plan today. And we certainly know they don't wait. This is signed by Chair Greg Kappett. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
So as most of you know, there have been, there's been some information jumping around on the internet, and I haven't really seen it in the mainstream news, but the Center for Disease Control, the CDC, recently updated a huge part of their website. And it's not really clear in most of the memes and things I've seen on the internet. Basically, they're saying that it's gone from 161,000-plus deaths down to 9,600-plus deaths. Doesn't really explain why that difference is, and some people are saying that this is false news, fake news. That's not the case, and I want to explain why, how it's, how it's changed. What the CDC has done that has made this huge difference is they have declared that out of the 161, 392 deaths in the United States, that only 6% of those deaths were actually caused by COVID. That's the difference. So that means that there have only been 9,682 deaths caused by COVID itself. The other 94% had two to three existing comorbidities. Comorbidities means leukemia, cancer, heart attacks, motorcycle accidents. It means they died with COVID, not of COVID. So what we're talking about here is suddenly, once we understand these true numbers of the danger of this illness, that's actually a .00002, 96% mortality rate. That's not a pandemic. That's not even an epidemic. It's far less than many other causes of death throughout the year that we see. So there, as several people have spoken before today, the substance abuse and suicides are up massively because of isolation due to this COVID situation. I've lost people to both, and we need to step up and start to act rationally here. I'd like to take my last few moments to thank not only fire response and first responders, but I'd also like to thank the citizens who stepped up when the fire trucks didn't come and helped to save homes, especially in Bonny Doone. Countless residents have said, and some have lost their homes anyway, but countless said, you know, they called and no one came. And the community stepped up. Many people in the, in the 50 to 100 people saving homes in Bonny Doone had fire experience, and that was amazing. So I understand, of course, that it's, it's somewhat dangerous, but they stepped up and saved. So thank you to those community members.
Chairman, supervisors, this has been a conspiracy, and we know it. A lot of us do. Your transparency has been deliberately taken away from the people. We know that Carlos Palacios put somebody up in charge of all the activity overseeing what happens with so-called COVID. The mask actually hurts you if you look it up. And we know that Mr. Palacios was a member of the Board of Directors of the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation has a social justice fund for Hugh DeLacy, a man that killed over 100,000, responsible for 100,000 Americans being killed, and you maintain his monument up there on the courthouse step. Mr. Palacios is seen next to Susan True and Margaret Lopez. You have hired, who's a vice president, a permanente. She's got a concern. That's a, you know, conflict of interest. If you want to do something, stop making this a, a free city for everybody and a free state and letting criminals, violent criminals out. If masks work, keep them in the damn prison and put the mask on them. Now Leon Panetta gave military and policy information to this spy in which his foundation, as if they really cared about you, but according to a national magazine, his California forward is right there with Antifa and Indivisible and those people trained that are doing the violence up and down the street. Leon Panetta voted for the Communist Chinese to take over both ends of the Panama Canal. Leon Panetta went to Nicaragua to help the Communist Sandinistas, paid for by the Unitarian Church, which is part of COPA, which you gave a million dollars to two weeks ago and which John Leopold belongs to one of those, face of one of those groups. And I think that's a conflict of interest, Mr. Leopold. In addition to your threatening members of the Grange, both their, their housing and their people, the violence is coming from you and people like the Leon Panetta machine. It's outrageous. We find headlines here. Bill Gates, a previous doctor, says a billionaire refused to vaccinate his own children. Now, come on. If you don't know about the Rockefeller 2010 lockstep, you better find out. And I think you need to fire Carlos Palacios and anybody else in on this conspiracy, and the council should have enough sense to warn you what you're doing right now. It's violating every tenet of self-government. What you do is in the dark. You're creating a parallel government through Ambag and CalCOG, Community TV. These SOBs won't even go over there and film it. The people don't know where you're making the decisions. You're a, you're a curse to this county, and you don't believe in self-government.
John Haski, Bonny Doone. First, I want to just recognize the efforts of Supervisor Conity and thank him for his support of us up there and his advocacy for us. I purchased two homes in Bonny Doone in 1999 and 2000. Once or twice a year, the folks you hired to protect our homes from fire came around and made inspections and suggestions on how to make our homes more fire resistant. We followed those recommendations and made corrections as required. We installed water storage tanks as required by county code. Our neighborhood developed an emergency exit so that there was more than one way out in the event of a fire. We hosted a firefighters' exercise in our neighborhood where the neighboring fire districts sent men and equipment to familiarize themselves with our neighborhood. A firefighter stood in my driveway and assured us that they would defend our home and that there would be a fire engine in every driveway. When we evacuated our home on August 18th, we were hopeful that the preparations would pay off. Sadly, it was all for naught. The folks you hired to protect us didn't show up. The folks you hired to protect us complained that my neighbors who chose to stay were interfering with their efforts. How can you interfere with someone who isn't there? When they did show up, they were loath to help my neighbors protect structures. They also stated that their personnel were not trained or capable of using the water stored in our tanks for firefighting. Why do we have the tanks? Both of my homes were destroyed by fire the night after we evacuated. Supposedly, the mountain was sealed off, and only official personnel were allowed in. How is it then that I watched my home burning on the Twitter account of a Los Angeles photographer? After the fire had burned through our neighborhood, our homes became photo ops for the press, who without any regard for us, walked around our private property shooting pictures for their own personal gain. Nearly two weeks later, I have still not been allowed in to see my property. Several pictures of it continue to appear on social media. I learned that the county planned to root around in the rubble of my life on my private property and remove items without my consent. I learned that the county can't even let me know when this invasion of my privacy will take place. The representative that I spoke to remarked that my neighbors would likely post on social media, and I'd learn about it there. Unbelievable. This is lunacy. Something must be done. At least let us be present when our decisions are made about our properties and the remains of our lives. Is that too much to ask? Thank you.
Oh, my God. What a horrible story. My name is Monica McGuire, and I'm here again out of just so much care for my community and asking how you have ignored the brilliant Becky Steinbrenner, who has brought it up to you month after month, year after year, that the problems that you have created by defunding the fire departments, by refusing to care about people like that gentleman, by, by having all the subterfuge, and my goodness, the gentleman now being moved, this is just so typical of this county, that you do things that make no sense whatsoever. We had to find out last week that the woman who runs the newspaper up in Boulder Creek, she was at a local community place for the evacuation, and she, all she had to eat was granola bars while I was watching food be thrown away at the fairgrounds. What on earth did you do not bringing Rosemary back to handle emergency operations? She's still being paid until the end of the year, and yet you decided unanimously last week to ignore all of us who have come to you since March, asking you to treat the care of the people in this county on the whole more than you have been willing to even consider to find out that five children have died from cancer at this meeting, when we have been asking, what are the rest of the death certificates going to in this county? Since March, we have asked for that information and never once received an answer. To find out that 23 people died in this county last year from opiate overdose, and yet you call six people dying with comorbidity in this county an epidemic and pandemic. You need to check your priorities. We still have gotten no answer to the number of people that have killed themselves in other ways besides the opiate overdoses. We still are not hearing how many other people have attempted suicide, and you're not talking about the 40% of small businesses that you have sold out. You have sold out, small businesses out, who are going out of business left and right for the supposed emergency that we might overrun our hospitals, which is the only emergency this county ever declared. We never overran them. It is completely clear that we are never going to overrun them, and you are lying to all of us by taking state and federal money as though we have that emergency in place. And that is unacceptable. I feel so angry, and that's got to be obvious. And I'm so shocked that more people haven't stood up and come and used our rights to say you must do your jobs. A third of your jobs is to come to us and find out what we need and want and bicker and fight and debate amongst each other for whose district gets to win out when you make votes, and you do not do any of those jobs.
Thank you.
And we are suffering. You must begin to do your jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. As I was listening to the presentation about addictions and drug overdose and very tragic accounts of deaths, I didn't hear about cell phone technology. There's a phrase, digital dementia even, of the cell phone microwave radiation causing cancer, causing aggression, causing functional impairment and death. Why isn't that included? This is a major part. I wanted to, and I'm dismayed that you want a limit to a half hour. The public comment, Supervisor Kappett, when you campaigned on listening to the public and taking into consideration the direction they're giving you, that was the basis of your going door-to-door and getting elected. And to see further censorship here on this agenda, oh, only 30 minutes, when people have come down here to give you direction and critique of what's going on as we should be doing as citizens in a so-called democracy. I have been reading about satellites a lot, and they're launching into the ionosphere and the problems with it. And I want to excerpt 5G Space Appeal by Arthur Verstemberg, an article, the current situation in space, which I'll leave you. And this is just part, thousands and thousands of satellites upsetting everything. The atmosphere is a source of high voltage that controls the electric circuitry of the biosphere and everything in it, including the fine-tuned circuitry of every human, every animal, every tree, and every fish. If we do not immediately stop the destruction of our fragile blanket of electric air, electrical air upon which we depend for growth, healing, and life itself, climate change and ozone destruction may not matter. And he talks about the testing of these 5G phones that is to take place this month, hundreds of thousands of satellites that also have to be de-orbited and blown up with all the toxic dust and smoke that accompanies it. I'll leave you a copy. You need to listen to everybody who wants to speak, Supervisor Kappett, please.
My name's Kelly McQuade, and I'm a registered nurse, and I work for the Santa Cruz City School District as a school nurse. And I'm here to advocate for better policies and more funding for mental health services and services to assist families in seeking help for their children who are suffering from substance misuse. I, I lost my son in 2014 to a heroin overdose, and he was on his way to UC Berkeley to major in math and computer science. We tried really hard to find help for him in 2014, and we, we, one week after we found out that he was addicted to heroin, he, he died from an overdose. We didn't have time to get help. We, we tried contacting every service there was in Santa Cruz, which there were very few. And in my experience as a district nurse, I witness families suffering. I know for a fact that many of us in this community have children suffering from mental health. We have an epidemic of mental health issues in, throughout the country, and suicidality has gone up, more than doubled in just the last few years. Families cannot access affordable mental health services, and it's really hard, if you have insurance, to access substance use disorder services. It costs... It costs families a fortune to try to get their children help to become sober. If you don't have Medi-Cal and you have private insurance, you're still going to be out of pocket $12,000 a month to get your child help, at least. At least. And I know I've been involved in, okay, I'm gonna stop, but I'm just advocating for better policies and more funding for mental health services and substance use disorder services. Thank you.
Good morning. Coke Britain, Matt's Britain Architects. The fires have really brought a lot of things home, things that I've already spoken about before, things I've been concerned about before. As the board knows, I'm suing the county for not following the Permit Streamlining Act. It is required for discretionary permits to review all aspects of it within 30 days. County Council is aware that I'm correct, but rather than accept that, they've chosen what's called the long defense to try to bleed me of money during the suit process. This is against the public interest and using public funds to do it. And what's clear is the county needs to speed up its process. You're gonna have 10 times more permits required than you have now. You're required to review building permits in 45 days by state legislation. Typically, we hear back in eight weeks. State law requires that you get or allow Private Plan Act if you exceed that time. You're required to have appeals and allow people to do that, so when things go awry, you have a way to answer that problem. Every appeal I make is blocked. This is so inexcusable. How are you gonna address 10 times the permits coming at you, then you can't even address the ones you have?
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for your service. I'm here to actually have two different comments, one in official capacity. My name's Sherlock Cabanis. I'm the chairperson for the Mental Health Advisory Board. Sorry, anxiousness with talking in public. And I just want to thank John Leopold for his proclamation acknowledging Substance Abuse Disorder Month this month. Very important. We've heard someone speak earlier on it and the impact it has on our community. And Greg Capués, you probably all know, serves on the Mental Health Advisory Board and is very active, so thank both of you for your knowledge when it comes to the disease of substance abuse. The second thing, and I'd like to say this as a private citizen, is with everything that's going on in Santa Cruz, leadership is so needed, and having leadership that's knowledgeable about how the systems work and know how to work with other government and federal funds to help secure Santa Cruz would be really needed. It's amazing to see how quickly Santa Cruz responded in getting places up for not only people, but also animals and keeping people healthy and safety during this tremendously chaotic time. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't recognize you when you first came up with the mascot, so good to see you. I know. Thanks. Thanks a lot, Sherlock. Okay, do we have anybody downstairs? Hi, Becky.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I agree with Marilyn Garrett. All people should be able to have three minutes and not limit it to two minutes after 30 minutes. That's not fair. So, thank you. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I'm a resident of rural Aptos. I want to thank the volunteers who went back or stayed in their communities to fight the fires, that Cal Fire did never come to help them fight. They saved many homes, and they're being treated very poorly. I was shocked to hear Chief, Cal Fire Chief Ian Larkin, say that they had received reports that these people were running out of fuel to go around and fight these fire, and Cal Fire was going to take a fuel tender up and sell them fuel. That's disgusting. These people should be given everything they need, including fuel, including water. Contractors who usually are called to supply water tanks, water tenders, water itself, were never called to fight this fire. What's going on? This is not right. And I applaud the volunteers who stayed in their communities and protected them. I want to ask why Cal Fire is allowing Rule 438, Warming Fire Guidelines, to stay in effect? When temperatures go under 50 degrees, warming fires are allowed. A week ago yesterday, there was a fire in Nicene Marks directly below my family and my community that was started by a warming fire. This cannot be allowed. Simply closing state parks to use will make it worse, because then there will be no eyes on the fire. This fire was reported from a payphone in Nicene Marks State Park at 6:15 a.m., likely by a bicyclist that would have been barred had the park been closed. Don't close the parks. Make Cal Fire stop allowing warming fires with Rule 438. I want to draw your attention to two excellent letters in your correspondence by Satya Orion and Thomas Conway, and I hope that you will read them and the white papers that they have again sent you regarding COVID. And thank you, Ellie Black, for your good testimony on this. I want to thank Public Works for moving ahead on items, Consent Items 32, 33, 34, to get much-needed road repairs on Bear Creek and Hubbard Gulch Road to make evacuation efforts better. That's one issue that was brought out to you in the excellent grand jury report, Ready, Aim, Fire: Santa Cruz in the Hot Seat. You are not paying attention to the evacuation routes for this county and maintaining them. Thank you. My time is up.
Thank you, Becky.
Oh, I do want to just say that the State Insurance Commissioner has said that there will be no insurance cancellations allowed for one year in this county, 824. And I wrote you, no one responded, but I will provide you the letter from the State Insurance Commissioner. No insurance cancellation will be allowed for one year in this county.
Thank you.
We have one more downstairs. Thank you.
Hi.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Justin Acton. I'm a lifelong San Lorenzo Valley resident, and I have to get back to help my neighbors and do some things, so I would like to stick around to talk specifically to Agenda Item 7, but I can't, so I hope that you'll allow me to do so now. As you can probably guess, my partner and I were displaced along with all of our neighbors and family as a result of these fires. These fires are still burning, and fortunately, I was just able to get back to our home, and my business, a pizza restaurant in Boulder Creek, is still standing. So I think it's important that I thank, you know, I want to be sure that I thank all the heroes who have helped make that possible. I'd like to thank the local volunteer fire departments who save neighborhoods, businesses, and a lot of our community. I want to thank also the residents, the people who stayed behind, who assisted the professionals to help in different creative ways. I'd like to give kudos to the Santa Cruz Sheriff, who have been doing an amazing job in responding quickly and thoroughly to this disaster. Every day, they have reassured our residents with their support at their press briefings. I appreciate their compassionate, common sense approach, and, you know, they've spent a lot of time utilizing relationships with people in our valley, and they continue to be of tremendous service to all of us. The valley population is really bold and it's resilient, and we're known for our strong opinions and for sharing them candidly. But I want you to know that we've tried to repurpose our connections to very productive endeavors. We've kept each other in the loop during this disaster, and we're continuing to do so. Despite having been dispersed, despite having been receiving very dispersed and delinquent information on things such as access to basic needs, hotel vouchers, emergency aid, we worked to share these puzzle pieces with each other from the first day. It took 11 days to get the Resource Center at the Kaiser Stadium. During that time, neighbors helped neighbors connect with what they needed, and will continue to do so as this process moves forward. And, you know, this fire is still burning, and the need is going to continue for a long time to come. I hope that this practice of support during the crisis models a way for our local government. It's not a time for lip service and talking points. It's a time for public servants to set aside egos and departmental differences. We need to all work collaboratively, you all need to work collaboratively on unified mission to rebuild what has been lost and to preserve what has survived. I will remind all supervisors, all of you, and not just Supervisor McPherson, that a loss in the valley is a loss for our county, and I invite you all to come and see what our needs are. My time is up. I have more to say, but I'll step down up to consideration for others. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chair, we have two web comments. I will set the timer. This one's a little long. This is from Satya Orion. This week, the CDC quietly updated their website data to admit that only 6% of all of the 153, 504 deaths recorded actually died from COVID. That's 9,210 deaths. The other 94% had two or three other serious illnesses, and the overwhelming majority were of very advanced age, 90% in nursing homes. If that's not enough, The New York Times published a shocking report on August 29th disclosing that 40 to 90% of positives being reported by the state are actually meaningless, because the PCR testing machines are set to a sensitive level that causes them to report meaningless viral fragments as positive. In three sets of testing, in three sets of testing data compiled by the officials of Massachusetts, New York, and Nevada, up to 90% of people testing positive carried barely any virus. A review by The Times found, therefore, millions of people are labeled positive infected who carry so little virus that no harm would come to them or anyone they come in contact with. Most of these people are not likely to be contagious, warns The Times. As The New York Times reports, the implications are staggering given the way positives are being used in public policy. In particular, California's reunion, school, and economic shutdowns are based on the false assumption that positive is a person with an active infection and who is potentially infectious. This is now known to be false. In the article, Harvard and UC virologists said, "It is irresponsible and shocking to treat these viral fragments as positive." But that's what California and Santa Cruz County are doing, irresponsibly shocking indeed and ruins given. I'll stop there. We have one more web comment. And this is from Jessica Peters. Dear Board of Supervisors, I appreciate Supervisor McPherson and Supervisor Coonerty's push to streamline and simplify the permitting process for the rebuilding effort. I urge you to look beyond the process and see the people and what they need. They need you to be advocates for them. They need you to challenge your department leaders to stretch themselves and come back to you with a plan that is more than just a new line at a permit counter. They need to ask questions and push back. Thank you. And Chair, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Then, go ahead.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is John Jovanetti, 450 Cliff Drive, Aptos. I couldn't find in the agenda where this was addressed, so I'd like to read this into the meeting's notes as such. I know that, having been a member of an elected board, you're not going to answer the questions, but I'd like to have them presented. It comes from the Pacific Coast Protection Association, and it talks about the studies being done for cliff homes and beachfront homes. County staff stated specifically that homes located on the beach would not be allowed to rebuild seawalls. At that time, staff stated that those homes would be declared a nuisance and would be required to be demolished at the homeowner's cost. Coastal bluff top homes will not be allowed to protect the toe of the bluffs from erosion process. The homeowners at some point will be required to demolish the homes, remove them at their own cost. Approximately 65 homes are in an exception area, from Capitola End of Opel Cliff to Soquel Point. The claims that the County of Santa Cruz must update the LCP and general plan and the method and conclusions that they are making are false. To date, the County of Santa Cruz has provided no substantive answers as to how what is proposed does not conflict with state housing law and state laws regarding fees. The County of Santa Cruz staff are requiring the homeowners waive their right to protect their homes and hold the county and coastal commission not liable for violating various state and federal laws. If I am incorrect on any of the items I've noted above, I challenge the County of Santa Cruz staff to put in writing in substantive response to all highlights I noted above, and thank you again.
Okay, bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. Does anyone, Supervisor Leopold, anything to say?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just be very brief. I know we've gone long. I just want to recognize the number of nonprofits who are doing incredible work. One is on Item 21, the Second Harvest Food Bank, who's, we're providing more resources to provide food and help reduce food insecurity to the folks who've been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. They're doing incredible work, and I just greatly appreciate them. On Item Number 24, which is the item about the fire from Supervisor Coonerty and McPherson, I strongly support their efforts to have a streamlined process to help people rebuild their homes. On Item Number 28 and 29, these are both groups who are doing incredible work with Housing, the Community Action Board, and the Central Coast Center for Independent Living. And what they're doing to help out assistance payments for folks is incredible, and Goodwill, which is helping dislocated workers during this very difficult time. I applaud their efforts. And lastly, on Item 30, this information from the Planning Department provides a good start for us to look at year-over-year rates. As we know that we're going to be challenged this year, I think it's going to be important for us to define very clear metrics about how long we want something to be in the Planning Department, so people can get permits and rebuild their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want, on Item 21, want to thank Second Harvest Food Bank for being a central hub for our food distribution during this difficult time. It's a nationally recognized agency, and they've stepped up the plate big time, has had so many organizations in cooperation with them. But we're so fortunate to have a well-structured organization like Second Harvest in our county. Also, on Item Number 24, the post-fire recovery planning, I want to thank Supervisor Coonerty for bringing this item up with my office, and I want to reassure our constituents that we will be working together tirelessly as long as we can to make recovery as compassionate and efficient as possible, and that we're here for each and every one of those who were affected by the fires. The extent of the damage is staggering. As we know, it's almost 1,300 structures, almost 900 of which are residences. We're committed to rebuilding our community and be stronger and more resilient than ever before. I would like to add additional direction to that item on 24, that as part of the report back on September 15th, that county staff provide a breakdown of damaged and destroyed structures by district if they could and by address if possible in the third and fifth districts, so we can better understand the damage specific to our respective districts. And I want to thank also on Number 30, the permit processing code enforcement. I want to thank the planning for this update. It's important to understand that all factors, it can influence the time it takes to get permits. I look forward to having a broader discussion about the primo pie improvements when we have more time. And on the topic of code enforcement, this work is going to become more critical now than more than ever we've ever experienced, and I can't wait to... than more than we've ever experienced, and I can't wait to see how we can help people rebuild their homes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Coonerty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As has been mentioned, I want to appreciate the Human Services Department for their work on Item Number 21, which is more funding for food through Second Harvest Food Bank. I also want to thank them for Item Number 29, which is funding for goodwill and job training as we face an economic crisis resulting from the pandemic. Item Number 12 and 30, which is the ADU Processing and then the Permit Processing Report, I just want to thank the Planning and Department of Public Works for really trying to look at their processes, adapt to the current situation, leverage technology, and improve our customer service. Initial efforts will pay benefits for years to come. And then finally, on Item Number 24, which is to work and get a report back on simplifying the process and... So want to... On other properties, I've heard from a number of Bonny Doon folks who want to rebuild, but they may need to have their RV or temporary permit or temporary structure on a neighbor's property to near their...
Supervisor Coonerty, you're breaking up, and so we're missing part of your comments.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but it has tended to go in and out.
Okay. I'll just repeat it real quick, which is for Item 24, additional direction to allow people to also have interim housing on other people's properties.
Very clear to us.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Fred?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything additional to add in regards to commentary on the consent agenda beyond what's already been added. I do need to recuse myself from Item 36, which is a rail-related item. My home is within 500 feet of the rail line, so I do have a personal financial conflict, so I'll recuse from Item 36.
He's pulling it?
No, he wasn't pulling it. He was just recusing himself from the item. And I think he's done with his comments. If you're ready for a motion...
You're all done?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I'll just make a quick comment. Item 24 and 25, on the consent agenda, I'd like to welcome Richard Valdez as the Fourth District Appointee to the Mobile and Manufactured Home Commission. And also on 25, accept the nomination of Laura Segura to the Commission on Justice and Gender as an at-large representative of Monarch Services. Thank you. And I have a comment. Go ahead. We're pretty much wrapping it up.
I understand. I apologize for being late. We wanted to take a two-minute opportunity to present an item before the council if possible. Do I have a two-minute?
Oral communications were items that aren't on today's agenda.
Yes, that is correct.
I think he's said two minutes.
Yes. State of New Ca... And my name is Mark Doring. I'm a representative for Santa Cruz County for a movement called New California State. Notice to all Californians, Chapter 2 grievance, September 1. New California is a new state in development exercising the constitutional right to form from the state of California. The process to form New California is authorized and codified in Article 4, Section 3 and Section 4 of the United States Constitution. The statement of intent, the citizens of New California have decided to remedy the abuse of power by the government of California by exercising their right to form from a new state, form a new state, which is provided in the United States Constitution, Article 4 and Section 3 and Section 4. We are determined to live under the state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States. The order of the day, the United States of America, California, and the 58 counties founded in the state of California are all sovereign. All are their own governance units under the auspices of the United States and California constitutions. Sovereign counties are the basic governance unit of the nation. Each county has its own set of governance guidelines that are in compliance with the Constitution of the United States and California State. Each county being sovereign has elected sovereign county officers that are elected by the entire county to hold their offices. They are all sworn in oath to the Constitution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Chair, now I'd be ready to move the amended consent agenda.
That completes the public comment, and do we have a motion?
I'd move the consent agenda as amended.
Have a motion second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Please call the vote.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Brand?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and that will take us to Item Number 7. What we'll try to do, we'll try to do seven, maybe eight, and then we'll have a break. Okay. See how long it takes. Okay. Item, consider a report on the existence of the local health emergency adopt resolution ratifying and extending a declaration of local health emergency by the county health officer due to the immediate threat to the public health from the CZU August Lightning Complex Fires and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the county administrative officer. Thank you. Hi.
Hi, Chair Capit and members of the board. Dr. Gail Newell and Chief Larkin from CAL FIRE are here today to present on this item.
Good morning, supervisors and staff. Pleasure to be here again. I wish I didn't have to talk this morning about the CZU August Lightning Complex Fires, but we are still in the thick of it. And as you know, this has presented a number of different public health issues, air quality, immediate threat to life from the fires themselves, and they will have continuing impact with debris that constitutes hazardous waste and a threat to public health, smoke, ash, charred remains, and significant damage to buildings and infrastructure, including the need for sheltering for a very long time to come, months, perhaps years. And so I declared a local health emergency for the fires six days ago on August 26, 2020. It requires your ratification in order to extend beyond seven days, so I'm here to ask for that today.
Maybe Chief Larkin would also like to add to this.
Hi. How you doing?
Yes, Chair Capit, members of the board. I'm here to just give you a brief update and kind of a status of the situation that is occurring in the CZU Lightning Complex. Today, as of 0600 hours, the fire is currently 85,218 acres. It's currently 43% contained. We continue to have 6,759 structures that are threatened. As of today, we're about 98% complete on our damage inspection, which resulted in the loss of 1,483 structures, and 921 of those are single-family residents between the two counties. To date, we have 2,394 personnel assigned to the fire, and those are the physical people that are out on the fire line fighting the fire and trying to get this contained. Just in relevance to the size of this fire, we can look at the acreage, but just in the line that's having to be established and created, it's 120 miles of fire line that is actually the perimeter of this current fire situation. The crews are on the ground diligently every day trying to get that line established. We now have the California National Guard here assisting us in trying to get those control lines established. And I just want to make reference to, we've been talking about the number of people that would normally be on a fire of this size. A fire of this size would have anywhere from about 4,000 to 6,000 people assigned if they were available. Just to give you some quick statistics, since August 15, 2020, approximately 14,000 lightning strikes have occurred in the state of California. That has resulted in over 900 fires that have occurred. Thirty-four of those fires are just from yesterday, just started, 34 new fires as of yesterday. Nineteen of those 900 fires are major fires or complexes throughout the state of California. There has been 1.4 million acres approximately that have been burned in the state of California, and there still remains well over 27,000 people that have been evacuated. And a result of these fires, there are eight fatalities that have been reported throughout the fire areas. As Dr. Newell stated, this fire here in our county and in San Mateo County burnt extremely hot in some areas, which is going to cause a lot of issues as we move forward with our watershed. As we know, water in this county is a major resource, and our watersheds provide that ample and quality water that we enjoy on a daily basis. We have a watershed emergency response team in place here that is working with different folks, hydrologists, geologists, with the county on determining what those parameters that need to be put in place and making those recommendations for mitigation factors as we move forward. I can't stress enough, on the recovery side, as Dr. Newell stated, there was a significant number of structures that burned, and the environmental impacts that those structures that burned can have to our drinking water and just to people in general, the ash as well as the contaminants that may be left on that structure can be very hazardous to the citizens that are in and around that or the runoff that may be occurred by that. So we are working very diligently. We have a lot of things in motion. Your Recovery Resource Center is a great example of the collaborative effort that is occurring for the citizens of Santa Cruz County, and those resources are available to them. The maps for the damage inspection are another resource where people can look to see if their structure has been destroyed so they can get an early start on that recovery phase. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, Chair, I'll just say, first of all, to Chief Larkin, thank you for the work of coordinating all the efforts of so many agencies to respond to this fire. It moved very quickly, and you worked very hard to use the resources that you had to make sure that we had the best response possible. My conversations with other fire agencies have told me that the entire effort felt well-coordinated, and I also appreciate all the briefings that have gone on that people can access. I want to especially appreciate that there now is a daily briefing in Spanish. That has been very important for members of the public who haven't known what was going on, and I appreciate the effort that CAL FIRE has put in to make sure that people who don't speak English could still understand what was going on with the fire. And to our health officer in another year, another event in which you didn't think that you might have to work on this year, it comes in bunches, and may this be the last part of the bunch, so.
Supervisor Fred?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief, and Dr. Newell as well for what you're doing. We're in a long rebuild process. Once CAL FIRE is able to fully get this under control, just the magnitude of the damage, the magnitude of the infrastructure damage and the magnitude of the rebuild is going to be something that's going to require a significant amount of partnership, not just from the county, but the community at large in general. But I do want to acknowledge something that we talked about last week, Chief. You know, a lot of people were kept safe due to the actions of your team, and for that matter, there weren't... Your team has also been kept safe under your own leadership, and I think that it should be acknowledged that this is one of the, I think it's now ranked already the ninth-largest fire in California history, if I'm not mistaken. It's not out yet, and there's going to be more damage that's going to be done, but we could have had a significant greater loss of life and property, including from your own team. And I think that even with the significant reduction in resources that you acknowledged because of how much was stretched thin across the state, real praise should be given to the fact that people are safe, a lot of properties were saved, and your team was safe as a result of the great work of you and the allied agencies. So I just wanted to publicly appreciate you for that.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to thank the whole, all the first responders, as well as the county staff who've responded to this crisis with effective, effective resources for the community, but then also a lot of compassion and a sense of urgency as we respond to the needs. I'm very grateful and proud of all the work that's been done across all the different county departments, and then our collaborations with these state agencies as we responded, as Supervisor Fred said, to the ninth-largest fire in California history and unfortunately experienced a fatality, but only one fatality when it could be so much worse. So I submitted a list of questions that I'm not going to get into today for the Environmental Health and Department of Public Works about rebuilding, but I'm going to ask the clerk to attach them to the record with the hope that we can get a clear document with the frequent questions and answers that I'm getting from the community about the recovery process, specifically about cleaning up hazardous materials and debris, access to property, and those sorts of questions. I think giving people more information, even when it's not always what they want to hear, is better because people can plan their lives and plan and align the resources for what they need. So I'll be submitting, I submitted those questions to the clerk, but I wanted to ask the Chief, Chief Larkin, we're all getting a lot of questions about repopulation. Can you walk us through how CAL FIRE decides to repopulate? And I guess the two-part question is for both areas that have not had any damage and then for areas that have had some damage in the district, in the fire district, or areas that have significant damage in the fire district.
So yeah, the repopulation is a coordinated effort between CAL FIRE and the law enforcement agencies that are affected, and this is specifically the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Department. So we work in a collaborative effort to work through a process to try to repopulate those areas that we can that are safe to do so. One of the challenges we have on this specific fire is we're trying to make the environment as safe as we possibly can for the firefighters that are out there still working very hard to get the lines in and the areas mopped up so it's safe for the residents to come back into. With our road structure that we have in this county, it's very easy for people to get in and around those areas and bypass control points. So it's very important that we make sure that we limit the people that are back in there so that the firefighters can go in and get that done. We're working as hard as we can and as fast as we can to try to get more people back into the affected areas. So that collaborative effort, each day, we have a meeting with our liaisons and law enforcement, with the Sheriff's Department and the CAL FIRE Incident Management Team to look at that process and to make those determinations when we can make the recommendation to law enforcement to repopulate those areas that are safe to do so for both the firefighters and the citizens.
And do you have a, and can you give us any sense of a timeline? Will there be any more repopulations this week or just so people can plan their housing to the extent possible?
I have not gotten an update, but as soon as we get an update, we'll have it posted out. So I did not see any additional discussions from yesterday of a timeframe, whether it's going to be 24, 48, or 72 hours if they're going to do any more repopulation. But I know... But I know those discussions are happening every day as we get closer to making the area safe for those folks to come back to.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Supervisor McPherson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to repeat those thanks to, that have been made to our local firefighters and CAL FIRE for finding that this blaze, the ninth largest in California history, as was mentioned. Also, the medical and health community that's simultaneously fighting COVID at the same time, it makes it doubly difficult for everybody. And I really want to just focus on the Sheriff's Office in the evacuation effort to begin with, and then the repopulation effort that's been following up. It's been well managed and reasonable, and nobody's been injured in getting in or out or whatever the case may be. Not, doesn't happen all the time. So very, my hats off to the Sheriff's Office for the extra hours and effort that you put in. And as was stated, it's going to be a long haul. I wish we could repopulate. We get, I get dozens of calls every day, but we just can't tell, you know, CAL FIRE can't tell exactly. I mean, the roads, I've had reports, not of hundreds of trees that are falling down, but thousands. And the last thing we want to do, as was mentioned, we've only had one loss of life in this whole fiasco, but we don't want to have anybody get injured because there's so much activity going on related to power, regaining power, the roads, getting clear roads, the water situation, particularly in some sections of the San Lorenzo Valley. There's a lot of things to think about before we can let everybody in, but we want to do that as quickly as possible. And even at that, it's going to be a long, long haul. But we're here to do it, and as was mentioned in our consent agenda, we want to make the rebuilding process as convenient and friendly as possible. So just have patience, people, and be nice to each other as we go along. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Yeah, I want to thank you also. How many residential homes is the total, actual residential homes that were destroyed beyond repair?
So our inspection teams have identified 921 single-family residential structures that have been destroyed.
Nine hundred?
Nine hundred and twenty-one.
Okay.
And that number may go up as...
There are other structures like barns and, you know, sheds and all that. So that's a different category.
So total structures destroyed are 1,483 structures. Of those 1,483 structures, 921 of those are single-family residences.
And the evacuation of the people, some are going back home, I guess, now. And then with the horses, the cattle, and sheep and all that, was there a number that we know of that were lost, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't have those numbers of how many livestock or animals were actually evacuated from the area, but as people repopulate or are allowed back into the areas, those animals are being brought back in with them, I would only assume.
Yeah. And I was watching that rescue of a couple of firefighters on television. What area was that where there were two firefighters and the helicopter had to go in and take them out? Was that maybe Monterey County, or was that in Santa Cruz County?
I'm not aware of that.
It was on television.
Of a rescue in the general vicinity of our fire. It may have been one of the other fires in the state.
Sure. How many injuries for firefighters?
I think we're up to three reportable injuries on this fire, which constitutes them being taken off of the incident. But other than that, we've had a pretty good safety record going forth, with the exception of we had one contractor working for a P G N E that I believe stepped into a, basically a burnout stump hole and received some burns.
You know, for an operation this big that you were dealing with, that's remarkable that we had so few injuries and actually no firefighter that lost his life. So I want to thank you very much. It's been a real rough, rough time. I guess there's some hot weather coming in on the weekend. Is that going to have an effect?
There is some changing weather coming in where we're going to have increased temperatures with a little bit of wind, and it could be problematic, but we're taking every effort right now to work as quickly as we possible to contain our lines so that the line will withstand that event that's coming in.
You bet. So thank you. God bless you. That will conclude the report.
Yeah, if you want to go out to the public comment.
Opening up the public for comment? Anybody? Hi, Becky.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning. You're on.
Thank you. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I live in rural Aptos in the Santa Cruz Mountains. Thank you for the reports. I want to just add in a bit to what I was trying to add at the end of the public comment, and this is about the SB 824 legislation that now, because we have declared a state of emergency in this county due to fires, that no insurance company can cancel or prevent new policies from being purchased in this county for a year. And if people lost their properties, it's for two years. I want to read to you what Mr. Fernandez from the State Insurance Commission Office sent to me last night, and this is important for you, Chief Larkin. For the purposes of this section, and he's talking about 824, it is important to note that the fire perimeter is determined by the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, in consultation with CAL OES. The information is then provided to the California Department of Insurance with data describing the fire perimeter sufficient for the commissioner to determine the ZIP codes that are within or adjacent to the fire perimeter. This needs to be done right away so that residents can get relief from fire cancellations, which have been a huge problem already, and I expect will continue to be. Please give them relief. I want to also sing praises to the equine evacuation volunteers. Those people work night and day to rescue animals and continue to do so, to care for those animals who people could not evacuate but have been stranded in the woods in these homes, areas that have not burned yet and hopefully will not. So they're providing the care to those animals. This is important because that will keep people from trying to sneak back in, to take care of their animals, and they will do that. So thank you, equine evacuation. They're a wonderful group. I also think it was really wise to evacuate a wide range of area to prevent the Highway 9, Highway 17 recurrence of what we saw happen at the Paradise. So thank you for that good thoughtfulness. I would like to urge the board to fund full-time county emergency services manager position. Would you axed? Carlos Palacio axed. We cannot do that. That's not wise, and we've seen why with some of the missteps that happened when Rosemary Anderson was not in the county due to vacation. I want to urge you to provide free dumpsters in all of these areas for people to clean up, both spoiled food and to clean up their homes. And I wonder, from Chief Larkin, are you really going to sell fuel to those volunteers who have been putting out the spot fires? Please don't do that. Please give them the fuel they need. And finally, Supervisor McPherson, I want to thank you for including me on your list of wonderful newsletters.
I'm sorry, Becky, your time is up.
It is that, that there is a Zoom meeting this Thursday, 3 to 5.
I'm sorry, Becky.
For San Lorenzo Valley water customers. Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks a lot, Becky, for your volunteer work at the fairgrounds. I saw you down there. Thank you. Go ahead. Hi. Yeah, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Do you want the person in the room or the person downstairs? There's someone up here in the chambers.
Okay.
Who would you like?
Hello, thank you. I've been a resident of Santa Cruz County since 1994, living mostly in the rural area. I've been very fortunate not to witness any major fires. I've had some shenanigans on the property that I manage, and I'm glad that I had 10,000 gallons of water and over 50 PSI gravity flow. It really helped. Number seven, the resolution ratifying local health emergency. Several citizens spoke today how the CDC has admitted that they were 94% off about the actual deaths from that. But yet, not only this county, the state, the country, and the world has been shut down, tens of thousands of businesses will never open again. What about those individuals? And there's not a timer on this. I'll try to be brief. So enough I'll say on that, you know, who is really reading between the lines here? And the declaration of local health emergency? I am so glad that the devastation wasn't worse in our county, but look at what's going on in the state. One can make comparisons to fires in Australia and all over the world. You know, I do a lot of research, and I keep finding more and more new information. Maybe this would interest some of you, and maybe this would interest the public, but CNN produced a 20-minute presentation about different kinds of military weapons, and one of the weapons that they spoke about specifically was directed energy weapons from lightning. When do you think CNN produced this? 1985. So all I know is what I witnessed, and I witnessed two weeks ago a great deal of horizontal lightning. And if the U.S. military is openly producing information 35 years ago about directed energy weapons, what's going on and what is coming? Because what also happened during these windstorms, I think it was six million acres of corn were devastated and damaged, and hundreds of grain silos were destroyed. What's going on here? What is the end result? It's great that we seem to be working together more. Hopefully, that can magnify and maybe cube, because what's coming next? So anyway, thank you for your time.
Now you want to go downstairs.
So.
Yeah.
You go ahead.
Go ahead, Monica.
So thank you so much, James, for those amazing statistics. I am asking again for you to speak publicly about Rosemary Anderson and why she was not brought in so that more people could have had emergency services with the long background needed by someone who's been in a position a long time. I'd also like to know, is it true that she's being paid through the end of the year, and yet you chose not to use her services? That's unclear. Like, so many things are unclear that are not helping us to help each other, which is where most people in this county get their help. I feel disgusted still by all the things that I mentioned earlier, but I'm much calmer because I'm not fresh with hearing how someone's home was destroyed while you turned a blind eye. The number of homes destroyed means now how many thousand are actually officially newly homeless? We would need to know how many are homeless in this county, period, since March, that you have ruined their lives by continuing to pretend that this is an emergency, that we have to wear masks when the number of deaths in this county are ridiculous. It's so ironic that masks are needed in order to not inhale ash and actually commit much worse health degradation, and yet that hasn't been talked about. It is all the more important now that we have an actual emergency that has hit this county. Agreed, it's been an emergency in other counties, in other places, but never in most of the counties of this state, including this one, as you know. And if you had now the expert panel authority to stand shoulder to shoulder, as we've been asking you since March, to look at the facts and find out what's needed, what do the majority of residents in this county need to move forward with now thousands more added to the homeless list because they have their homes destroyed and no ability to even know how many other people have already become homeless because of the COVID nonsense in this county? And the fact that we have no response from you over and over, no matter how many ways we offer our help, our services, and our requests for help, that we are asking that you give us the information that we need, and that Greg Kappen had to just ask for something extra is understandable a little bit more after a real emergency. But you have not had a real emergency in this county, and you have done nothing to actually answer the public questions since March about the actual numbers in this county. Now you have thousands more who have joined an extremely needy group, like all those that have already become homeless, like all those who have already lost their family members to suicide, like all those who have already lost their family members to all the other collateral damage caused. And now the expected 45% homelessness of people who won't be able to pay their mortgages and rent? We want to know, how true is that in this county? We need to know that so we can deal with it.
Hi, Marilyn.
Hi. Let's see. This is a serious question that James brought up about directed energy weapons. I've read something about that as well, and lightning causing fires. People who observed the lightning strikes have all said how it's out of the ordinary, not natural that was. So there needs to be an investigation of what really caused these massive fires. And some of the, what I've also read about what is damaging the whole ecosystems is the wireless microwave technology, the satellites. And I heard Barry Tower speak on a talk, the truth about 5G and Wi-Fi, in which he quoted a document from Australia where the telecom industry there stated in writing that to have the 5G, the trees had to be removed. And trees are being cut down all over Europe. The trees are the lungs of the earth, not our enemy. And Barry Tower also said how the immune system of the trees are destroyed, the leaves dry up, and, you know, you can remove the trees, you can have 5G. The 5G tends to be interfered with by the trees. So, and when you talk about fire lines, is this just an excuse to clear cut? Things are so devastating that are going on, and they aren't caused so much by just nature at all. The toxins in the environment, this emergency, you know, if we had a system that wasn't based upon profit and pollution, is somebody's profit and all these chemicals, we wouldn't be in such a bad state. But the chemical industry, the radiation industry, pesticides, all that are all in our bodies and circulating and causing damage because they're loud and they're profitable. I like Dr. Sanders' Chiang River's book, Living Downstream, when ecologist looks at cancer in the environment, where she states it's intolerable to be regulating, monitoring, permitting known and suspected carcinogens into the environment rather than prohibiting their generation in the first place, and that allowing this is a form of homicide. We know people will die. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, just to get back to the item that was before us about the emergency, about the fire, I would like to move the recommended actions.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? We do have two web comments that we need to read in. Thank you. The first web comment comes from Kenton Davenport. Dear Board of Supervisors, I applaud the residents of Santa Cruz County who stepped up to volunteer their time and donate their money and supplies for the evacuees. So many acts of kindness and heroism from community members is amazing and humbling. Now it is time for the Board of Supervisors to stand up and shine too. Answer your phone, be thoughtful and empathetic, step up your social media game, hold weekly question and answer sessions with your constituents, ask government the hard questions, be an advocate for your constituents. Thank you for your cooperation, Kenny. And we have one more on this topic from Satello Ryan. This is true. This is a true emergency requiring all your efforts in order to help the community recover. And I'm sorry, this actually goes off topic, so I won't finish reading it into record.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comment, and we do have a motion. And do we have a second?
Sounds like Supervisor Fred's second.
I'll call, roll call. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson? McPherson? Supervisor McPherson? Okay. Chair Caput?
Aye.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mine's an aye also. So it passes unanimously. We'll take a, we'll come back at 11:25. We'll take a short break, and thank you. Consider the Audit Controller to proceed with necessary actions to secure the 2020-2021 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes in the amount not to exceed a total of $50 million and adopt the attached resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of 2020-2021 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes. Approve of execution and delivery of a continuing disclosure certificate. Approve the form of the official statement and note purchase agreement. Approve the distribution of a preliminary official statement and an official statement and authorize necessary actions and execution of documents in connection with the issuance of the 2020 and 2021 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes as outlined in the memorandum of the Audit Controller and Treasurer Tax Collector. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Caput and members of the board. Edith Driscoll, the Audit Controller, Treasurer Tax Collector. I am requesting that the board authorize the Audit Controller to proceed with the necessary actions to secure the 2021 TRAN Tax Anticipation, Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note, we refer to it as the TRAN, in the amount not to exceed $50,000, $50 million. And to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the issuance and sale, approve the execution and delivery of the continuing disclosure certificate, approving the form of the official statement and note purchase agreement, approving the distribution of the preliminary official statement, and an official statement and authorizing necessary actions and execution of documents in connection with the issuance of these notes. The issue being addressed here is cash flow. In the ordinary course of business, the county experiences temporary cash flow deficits during the fiscal year due to the mismatch of revenue and expenditures. We open our new fiscal year on July 1, and we begin paying bills on that date. However, the primary revenue is property tax, and that comes in later in the year. To meet these short-term cash flow needs, the county has consistently issued an annual Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note, a TRAN, to manage its cash flow. The TRAN is paid back in the same fiscal year in which the funding is received. We set the funds aside three times a year and pay it back at the end of the year. The 2021 TRAN will include an amount necessary to cover a portion of fiscal year 1920 delinquencies in the TEATER Plan. This is consistent with past practice. Under the TEATER Plan, the county allocates property tax revenues based on the total amount billed, not collected. In exchange, the county receives the penalties and interest on any delinquent taxes when collected. This plan provides tax-receiving entities to have a stable revenue stream. The Audit Controller Treasurer Collector's Office has been working with the CIO's office to develop the necessary documentation, cash flows, and projections for the fiscal year 2021 and the estimated actual data for 1920. I very much appreciate the assistance of Christina Mary and would not be able to do this detailed work without her and her team. We recommend that the County of Santa Cruz contract with Jones Hall as bond counsel, Norton Rose Fulbright as disclosure counsel, Harold &amp; Company Advisors LLC as financial advisor, and Raymond James &amp; Associates as underwriter. A form of the preliminary official statement is attached for the board's review. As noted under current market conditions and the compressed time between adoption of the revised budget and funding by September 30, the county's municipal advisor advised that it would be more cost-effective to sell the bonds using a negotiated sale with one underwriter. On the county's behalf, the municipal advisor solicited underwriting proposals to negotiate the sale of the bonds from Raymond James, JP Morgan Securities, Citibank Global Credit Markets, Morgan Stanley, and Wells Fargo. After evaluation of the proposals submitted, Raymond James was selected as the underwriter. The Raymond James proposed fee was the lowest of the responses received. Yesterday, myself and the CIO team made presentations to S&amp;P and Moody's. We do not anticipate any changes in the ratings from previous years. However, they have not released these ratings for another week or two. In discussions with the rating agencies, the area of concern that they did share was that the $7 to $10 million reserve that the county has is what he called slim. Again, we hope to have the same rating provided to us, and we won't know that for a week or so. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
We'll open up the board for questions. Supervisor McPherson?
No questions.
Supervisor Coonerty?
No questions. Thank you, Driscoll and the team for making this work.
Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, no questions, and also thank you, Ms. Driscoll, for your continued work on this.
Okay. Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Driscoll, for your presentation and for the ongoing work of you and your office. It's been a great partnership with the board in order to create our reserve funds, and I know that we have reserve funds to tap during these times of economic crisis. I'm glad we were able to tap both a couple times this year to avert layoffs and as much as possible and maintain services in the county. The item before us, the agenda says not to exceed a total of $50 million. The board letter talks more like 46 or 48. And do you expect that wider a range?
No, we do not. At the time that we're preparing this information, $50 million was our target, was what we expected to be our target, and it has been our consistent target over the last number of years. But we have to go through, our financial advisor goes through some legal analysis to determine how much we can legally borrow, and it was finally determined that our set number is 56.5.
56.5?
Uh huh. Excuse me, 46.5.
Okay.
Sorry. 46.5.
Trying to keep track of all the numbers.
That's right. Not to exceed 50 because we need to get our presentation prepared in advance, but the final number, again, our presentations to Moody and Standard &amp; Poor's was just yesterday.
And can you just remind me again when do you expect to hear about what the rate's going to be?
Because of the Labor Day weekend, they are not really committing to Monday, but we would hope by Tuesday we'll get the ratings.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for the work, and I know this is an important part of county government. It's important not only to us but to all the other entities that receive funding from our treasury.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Really appreciate all the work you're doing and everything you're doing. Thank you. Opening up for public comment. And no one, we do have somebody here? Yeah, hi.
Agenda item eight, correct? The $50 million loan? Okay. I don't know, what was the income from property taxes in 2019? Over $560 million. So even if hell freezes over, you guys will probably be able to secure the $50 million. You know, it's interesting how many county workers have been laid off since March. Many. What is this money being used for? You know, I have yet to really research the auditing in this county, but I certainly have some questions. So I guess that's, well, yeah, it's just nice that we can all make comments on stuff, and I'm just wondering about the accountability from what other citizens have shared on other subjects. I do want to share a very interesting story title. The Tangled Web: Oh, What a Mangled Web We Weave. Wow, that is just a great title. I don't know how good of a title it is for a grand jury paper.
That's not the item we're dealing with right now.
I realize that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else here? Okay, we'll take it downstairs. Anybody there?
There are no web comments, and there is nobody downstairs to comment on this.
Nothing online?
Nothing on, no.
Okay, open it up to the board for a motion.
Chair, I just appreciate the work of our Audit Controller Treasurer Tax Collector Office. This is an important part of county government. We do this every year, and hopefully we'll get the best rates possible based on the sound fiscal foundation that we've had. So I would move approval of the recommended actions.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Bring it up for the vote.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Caput?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and thank you. We'll go to item number nine, public hearing to consider application 181611, a proposal for permanent room housing at 165 East Street in Seacliff requiring rezoning, local coastal plan amendment, and residential development and exception permits to determine that the proposal is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the planning director. Hello?
Hi there. Thank you, Chair Caput, supervisors. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider an application to add the permanent room housing combining district to 165 East Street. As a short reminder, the permanent room housing, or PRH combining district, was adopted by your board in January of 2020 and was certified by the Coastal Commission in March. The use and development standards for the district have been incorporated into the county code. The PRH district recognizes and preserves housing that is converted from former visitor accommodation and care facilities that have become obsolete for their original intent. The district creates a pathway for permanent housing to be legalized on these properties and upgraded as necessary to meet health and safety criteria. The district is available to any parcel in the county that meets eligibility criteria. So the application before you is for 165 East Street, which is a small, approximately 3,200 square foot property in the Seacliff neighborhood. This property location is within the coastal zone, and the application will require Coastal Commission review after the board approval. The property is currently developed with a triplex that was originally built in 1949 as a hotel, along with the adjacent parcel, which is addressed 163 East Street and is under separate ownership and is not applying for the PRH district at this time. The existing structure includes two 414 square foot one-bedroom units and one 285 square foot studio. All of the units have kitchens and bathrooms. There is no parking on site, and there is no room to add parking. The site has a general plan designation of RUH, which is Residential Urban High, and is zoned RM3, which means multifamily residential, minimum 3,000 square feet of lot area per unit. Based on the lot size, this zoning effectively only allows for a single dwelling on this property. The existing development is therefore a non-conforming use based on the density. And the PRH district is the only zone district that would allow for the existing density on this site to be conforming. And for PRH applications, we do review recent code enforcement and police activity, since these are included in the county code as potential reasons for denial or revocation of PRH applications. So in that review, we found no recent police activity on this property. There is a code enforcement case from 1995, which was resolved. So the proposed project would add this property to the PRH combining district and would classify all three housing units as PRH units. A zoning plan amendment is needed to change the zoning to RM3 PRH, and a residential development permit is required to approve and define the parameters for the PRH use. Since there is no off-street parking, an exception is needed from the PRH requirement of one parking space per unit. Also, a special rezoning finding is required due to the location of this property in the coastal zone. That finding is that the property must be considered to be functionally obsolete as visitor accommodation. Staff has made the findings for the required approvals. Detailed findings are provided in the resolution and the ordinance in your packet. But to summarize, the project provides a community-related use, which is housing that is affordable by design. The units were originally built as motel rooms, which are not subject to density limits, and a conversion of these rooms to residential units was not anticipated when the motel was first constructed. The site has been in use as residential for some time and, as such, has low potential to function again in its original use as visitor accommodation. The rezoning allows for the existing residential use to continue and is in the best interests of public health, safety, and welfare. No further intensification of use is proposed, and there would be no change to the existing parking arrangement for the housing units. Any intensification of use on this parcel, such as the creation of an additional PRH unit, would require an amendment to the development permit. Staff has prepared conditions of approval for the PRH use on this property. Conditions of approval will include a building inspection and building permits as needed for any health and safety upgrades, submittal of rental information, and a five-year review. Also, the criteria of revocation for the permit are included in the conditions of Staff recommends that the board hold a public hearing and adopt the rezoning ordinance and the resolution approving application 181611. Direct staff to file the sequo notice of exemption with the clerk of the board and submit the project to the Coastal Commission for review. And just a couple of things to add here. The property owners for this property, as well as their representative, have been impacted by the fire, and they're not able to be here today, so there will not be a presentation from the property owners. Also, I wanted to point out that there are public comments attached to this item in the agenda online, but those comments are actually not for this item. Those are for proposed changes to the general plan, Chapter 6, public safety element, and related code changes. That item, I believe, was continued to September 15. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Open up the board for Supervisor Coonerty?
I don't have any questions. I want to thank Ms. Allen for her work, and it's good to sort of formalize what has been in existence for a long time and bring these properties into compliance. Thank you.
Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Chair. This is, in my district, there are no concerns with the neighbors or the neighborhood. This is, these have, this one has not been a problematic property in any way, shape, or form, and has been used under this type of housing or has had this use for quite some time. So I'm supportive of this action. I appreciate the work of the planning department on this.
Supervisor Leopold?
No comments.
Supervisor McPherson?
No comments.
Thank you. I guess it looks like they're one-bedroom, one-bath, each one?
Yeah, there are two one-bedroom units and one studio unit.
One studio?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment regarding public hearing. If any person challenges an action taken on the foregoing matter in court, they may be limited to raising only those issues raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the Board of Supervisors at or prior to the public hearing. Okay. Anybody here? Anybody downstairs? Any comments online? Any comments online?
Is there anybody in the community room wishing to speak on this topic? We do have one web comment. This is from Mercury Miner. Hello, I support the PRH program and application. I thank staff, the Planning Commission, and the board for creating the zoning overlay and program to preserve and allow residential use of obsolete facilities such as care homes and motels. Everyone worked hard to make this program a reality. Again, thank you. Regards, Michael Cox, Socal, California. And that is it for public comment.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Chair, this is a good use of changes in our zoning code. I would move approval of the recommended actions.
Second.
Please call the board.
Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go to item number 10. Public hearing to consider application 181612, a proposal for permanent room housing at 222 Santa Cruz Avenue in Seacliff requiring rezoning, local coastal plan amendment, and amendment to the residential development permit 04-0468 to determine that the proposal is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the planning director.
Hi, hello again. Thank you Chair Capit, Supervisors. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider an application to add the permanent room housing district to 222 Santa Cruz Avenue. So 222 Santa Cruz Avenue is a .3 acre property in the Seacliff neighborhood under the same ownership as 165 East Street and adjacent to that parcel. This property location is within the coastal zone and the application will require Coastal Commission review after the board approval. This property is developed with the Adobe Hacienda, which is a former motel that was constructed in 1946 and then expanded in 1961. Over time, the motel rooms were converted from visitor accommodation to long-term residential units. The Adobe Hacienda includes 15 units in five separate structures, some of which were converted from multiple original hotel rooms. There are five studios, eight one-bedroom units, a two-bedroom unit, and a three-bedroom unit. The units range in size from 225 to 1,000 square feet. All of the units have kitchens and bathrooms. There is a parking lot in the middle of the parcel with 10 parking spots as well as an additional three parking spots along Santa Cruz Avenue, which is, those spots are partially in the right-of-way, serving the units on that side of the property. The conversion of this property from commercial to residential use was actually already recognized by the county in 2005 when the general plan designation was changed to RUH and the zone district was changed to RM1.5. Permit 04-0468 was issued at that time with parameters to the residential use. However, the property is still considered legal non-conforming due to density. So the PRH combining district is the only district that would allow for the existing density to be considered conforming. We did look at code enforcement and police activity history on this parcel. There was code enforcement history in the late 90s and early 2000s related to the residential use being illegal at that time and that code enforcement was resolved with the issuance of the existing development permit on the parcel. There's been no police activity for the past five years except for one incident that occurred in April of this year regarding a dispute related to noise and liquor. And there has not been any follow-up police activity regarding that incident. The proposed project would add this property to the PRH combining district and would classify all 15 housing units as PRH units. A zoning plan amendment is required to change the zoning to RM1.5 PRH and a residential development permit is required to approve and define parameters for the PRH use. The site does have fewer than the PRH requirement of one parking space per unit, so a parking exception is needed. You will note that in your packet for this project there are replacement pages for the memo as well as the resolution. The reason for these replacement pages is to add the exception findings for the parking. Staff was not previously planning to include exception findings for the parking since the existing development permit already recognizes that the site is underparked and allows for the 15 residential units. But the addition of the exception findings makes it more clear that the project is compliant with the PRH district requirements. Also, a special rezoning finding is required due to the property's location in the coastal zone. The property needs to be considered functionally obsolete as visitor accommodation. Staff has made the findings for the required approvals. Detailed findings are provided in the resolution and the ordinance in your packet and are along the same lines as the findings made for application 181611 in my previous presentation. Staff has prepared conditions of approval for the PRH use on this property. The permit would incorporate conditions from the existing development permit 04-0468, including a requirement that the units remain as deed-restricted affordable housing, a requirement that structural upgrades need to be completed before units 17 and 18 can be lived in, and there may not be fewer than 10 off-street parking spaces on-site. And conditions of approval specifically related to the PRH use will include a building inspection, building permits as needed for health and safety requirements, submittal of rental information, and the five-year review, as well as the criteria for the revocation of the permit. Staff recommends that the board hold a public hearing and adopt the rezoning ordinance and resolution approving application 181612. Direct staff to file the CEQA notice of exemption with the clerk of the board and submit the project to the Coastal Commission for review.
Questions? Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your account in this property has a bit more of a history than the other ones that we were just discussing. And my hope is that the owners would put some investment into this property too. This used to be a bit of a crown jewel within the Seacliff area and it has, it doesn't carry that same sort of weight as it used to before, although there has been some investment in it. Hopefully, planning can encourage as they go in on those few units and the required upgrades, maybe an overall encouragement for an investment in the rehab of this property. It was, from a historic perspective, quite a hotel at one time, but it has been used as a very, very important portable housing component within my district. But again, it would be, it would be nice to see some additional investment in this property to just bring it back to some of its original history and glory. But I am supportive of the conversion. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor...
No questions. I'm supportive.
Supervisor McPherson?
No questions. Adds to our housing element here in Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
No questions. I think this is a great program we have. I think you have to open it up for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. Regarding public hearing items, if any person challenges an action taken on the foregoing matter, in court, they may be limited to raising only those issues raised at the public hearing described in this notice correspondence delivered to the Board of Supervisors at or prior to the public hearing. Open up for a public question or questions?
Nobody is in the community room, but we do have one web comment. Again, this is from Michael Cox, repeating that he supports the PRH program and application. I thank staff and Planning Commission and the board for creating the zoning overlay and program to preserve and allow residential use of obsolete facilities as care homes and motels. Everyone worked hard to make this program a reality. Again, thank you. And that will be it for public comment.
Any downstairs though? Close the public, close the public hearing? And open it up for motion?
I would move approval of the recommended actions.
Second.
First and second?
I'll do roll call. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item number 10. No. Going to, we're 11 now?
11 is where we're at.
Number 11. Public hearing to consider application 28381, a proposal to rezone three continuous parcels totaling approximately 60 acres from the special use zone district to the timber production zone districts. District on parcels located approximately, approximately one mile south of the intersection of Buzzard Lagoon Road and Highland Way and the Eureka Canyon planning area confirms the proposal is exempt from requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the planning director. How you doing?
Good morning. Nate Macbeth, County Santa Cruz Planning Department. On June 24th, 2020, the Planning Commission held a public hearing in consideration of this application and adopted a resolution recommending approval of the rezoning. Note that staff has not received any public comment regarding this item. The project qualifies for a statutory exemption according to, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And as indicated in the staff report, all the criteria have been met to rezone the subject parcels to the Timber Production Zone District. The Planning Commission has recommended your board approve the rezoning and all required findings can be made to support this application. Therefore, it's recommended that your board conduct a public hearing, confirm the project is exempt from requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, direct staff to file a notice exemption with the clerk of the board and adopt the attached ordinance, rezoning the subject parcels from the special use zone district to the Timber Production Zone District. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I would note that the applicant and forester on the project, Joe Culver, is here if there's any questions related to his work. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay, I don't hear anything, so we'll go and we'll open up the public hearing. And anyone regarding public hearing items, if any person challenges an action taken on the foregoing matter in court, they may be limited to raising only those issues raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the Board of Supervisors at or prior to the public hearing. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Joe Culver. And first off, I'd like to thank the board and the county staff for your work. I'm proud to be from Santa Cruz and raise my family here. And I don't always agree with all the decisions that come from here, but I know you and we all have the best interests of the community at heart, so thank you for that. Okay, on this item, I am a registered forester and I prepared the management plan that certifies that the property meets state standards for timber stocking and growth capability and qualifies for the rezoning. The owners, Shane and Gina Miller, are interested in managing their property into the future. It's in a rural part of the county. It's bordered by timberland on several sides. And I support the rezoning and can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
There's nobody in the community room and we have no web comments, so that would be the end of public comment.
Okay, we'll, we'll close the public hearing.
Chair, I will move the recommended actions.
Second.
I'll call roll. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item number 11, public hearing to consider application 28381, a proposal to rezone three contiguous parcels totaling approximately...
I think we just did that one. We're on item 12.
Where, where are we?
Item 12. You want me to read it in?
We're at 12?
Yeah, 12.
Okay. Consider approval and concept of ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 13.10, Santa Cruz County Code, the local coastal program implementing ordinance regarding accessory structures, home occupations, temporary uses, and structures, structures hosted rentals, adopt resolution accepting California Environmental Quality Act notice of exemption, schedule the ordinance for second reading and final adoption on September 15th, 2020, and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum, memorandum of the planning director.
Thank you Chair Capit. Supervisors, Stephanie Hansen, principal planner with the Planning Department. Today, we bring before you amendments to Santa Cruz County Code, Chapter 13.10, related to temporary permits, uses and structures, accessory structures, home occupations, and hosted rentals. As directed at the board's August 18th meeting, staff has amended the maximum height allowed for accessory structures in residential districts within the urban and rural services line to 13 feet. This change is shown in track changes on page 247 of the board's packet. Accessory structures located outside of the urban and rural services lines remain subject to the existing height regulations in the zone district. This is the only change to the ordinance since the board's last review. To summarize, the recommended actions today are to consider the ordinance amending Santa Cruz County Code sections 1310-332, 1310-342, 1310-611, 1310-612, 1310-613, and 1310-700 and 616. Adopt the resolution accepting that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and directing staff to submit the proposed amendments to the Coastal California Commission for, California Coastal Commission for Certification, approve the ordinance in concept, and schedule the ordinance for second reading and final adoption on September 15th. The full text of the recommended action appears on page 219 of the packet. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that you made, that we were able to make the changes. I think it makes it for better ordinance.
Anybody, any other board members? Okay. Any public comment? We'll open up the hearing for public comment.
Chair, this isn't a public hearing, but there are no public comments in the community room nor on the web.
All right, we'll close the public comment period and open it up to the board for action.
I will move approval of the recommended actions.
Second.
I'll call roll. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to item number 13. Consider a final appointment of Yasmin DeHera to the Commission on Justice and Gender as an at-large representative of the Latino community for a term to expire... for a term to expire April 1, 2024.
I would move approval.
Okay.
Second.
So...
Open up for...
You want me to ask if there's any public comment?
The comment from the public?
There's n- nobody in the community room nor, nor any web comments.
Okay.
I can go ahead and call, if you'd like, call for the vote. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Conerty?
Aye.
I'm sorry about that. Supervisor Friend?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And that takes us to item 13.1, which was item 18 on the consent agenda. Supervisor Leopold?
Well, uh, I pulled this at the request of a constituent, um, uh, who's been very interested in us having the toughest regulations as possible for our vacation rentals. And I wanted, uh, at his request, he wanted to make sure this was on the regular agenda so he could make his comments, and I wanted to honor that. Um, please come forward, Norman.
First, thank you Supervisor Leopold for emphasizing the importance of this issue. A second reading. A second chance. We don't often get a second chance. A chance to reflect. A chance to correct. A chance to right a wrong. This is a most sacred opportunity to do right by your constituents. Our community. We look to you to halt and reverse the disruption wrought by 20%. One out of every five houses no longer homes. One out of every five houses a likely party palace concentrated in the heart of our residential community. A relentless dismantling of that community. The damage done and the damage to come should you not reverse course. Your ordinance permits and encourages these disruptive businesses concentrated in the midst of our residential zone communities. The exact opposite of what other community governments up and down the coast have done for years to protect their constituents. Why? Is it the false lore of easy revenue? May I suggest you rethink that? It will ultimately prove a fiction. Instead, please act to preserve our community and encourage vacation development in areas that are zoned for such. This is your obligation to the community that you are vowed to serve. And thankfully, you have a second chance to make things right by markedly reducing that concentration, saving our community and our way of life. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item 18 is, uh, is, uh, to adopt an ordinance amending Santa Cruz County Code Section 13.10.694, vacation rentals and use charts within Sections 13.10.312, and 13.10.10.372, to implement amendments to the 13.10.694, which are also amendments to the local coastal program. It was approved in concept on August 18th, 2020.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the comments, uh, from the very dedicated Pleasure Point resident. You know, the, um, it, it wasn't that long ago that we had virtually no regulation. Not virtually, we had no regulation of vacation rentals in Santa Cruz County. And it's taken a number of years as we build up, uh, strong regulation. What I feel good about the, what we have in front of us today is, um, is, uh, we, we've already placed a moratorium, uh, out there. Uh, we have reduced the number of vacation rental permits that could be issued in the Pleasure Point area or the Live Oak designated area. We have reduced the number even further, um, than, uh, than originally proposed. And we, most importantly, is we've toughened the language around violations so that, uh, houses that become problems, um, can be dealt with, that they will, that if they do not reform, that they will lose their permit, and that the, the power is with the neighbors, not with the renters. And so I appreciate, uh, the, the, uh, input about trying to make it even tougher. Um, I think this is an important step, uh, for us to tape, and it should, and it should be recognized, uh, for the fact that we are, these are the toughest regulations the county has ever had around vacation rentals. And I think that we will continue to work on this over the years. I think we will all be watching what happens with vacation rentals um, as our community needs to identify housing quickly for the people who've lost their homes. Uh, I know I've talked to some of my, some of my colleagues about this, and we'll, if, uh, we expect that, that, uh, some of these homes will become available for longer-term rentals for neighbors who have lost their homes here in Santa Cruz County. And I implore, uh, anybody who owns a vacation rental to think about that carefully, uh, because it'll be important as we think about the meeting the housing needs in our community. I would be prepared to, uh, move the recommended actions.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Chair, we have a first and second. Would you like me to call for the vote? Okay. Supervisor Leopold?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Conerty?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Chair Capit?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we're gonna go to closed session. I believe there is reportability on, uh, item B.
That's right, thank you. There is.
Okay. So we'll now go on to closed session, and we'll come back, uh, if we need to report on item B. Thank you. Okay, we have a report out of, uh, closed session?
Yes, thank you Supervisor. Uh, only want to report that the board has authorized initiation of litigation pursuant to Paragraph 4 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 54956.9 with regard to one case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes, uh, today's session. Thank you.